Welcome everyone to the December 4th, 2012 Shakopee City Council Meeting. Item number one, Ms. Weckman, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Sherman?
Here.
Counselor Lehman?
Here.
Counselor Clay?
Here.
Counselor Whiting?
Here.
Here!
Sorry.
I was just got scared there for a second. I don't know, too, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, this is not necessarily an addition, but I just wanted to make note that one of the items which was anticipated to be added to the meeting tonight was a discussion of an economic development project with the Emerson Company. After discussions this afternoon with representative of that company, it was mutually determined that there is a need for more information and research, and therefore it's not ready for discussion tonight. Therefore, it's not being added to the agenda. You could probably expect to see this back at a future meeting, most likely January 8th.
Any other additions or corrections? All right, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Counselor Sherman, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Clay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number four, consent business. Do we have any items that we'd like to remove from the consent agenda this evening? Counselor Lehman?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead and get the second there.
Do we have a second? I'll second that. Second by Mr. Whiting.
My apologies, we did receive a request from the applicant today to withdraw item 4D1, which would be the preliminary plat of Dakota Crossings. So if your motion would be amended to include that as a deletion from tonight's agenda.
Is that all right with you, Counselor Lehman?
Yes, it is.
Counselor Whiting?
Yes.
All right. Any discussion on the items? Mr. McNeil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 4A1 approves parking control changes in the 200 blocks of Holmes and Lewis Streets. 4A2 approves a cooperative agreement with the city of Prior Lake for the Pike Lake Road culvert replacement project. 4B1 acknowledges the successful completion of her initial six-month probationary period of employment for Claudia Casman and grants her full-time regular status as records technician with the Shakopee Police Department. 4B2 adopts resolution number 7260, which is the 2013 pay plan for non-union city employees effective January 1st, 2013, and extends existing salary rates for elected officials. 4B3 adopts resolution number 7261, setting the 2013 wages for part-time, temporary, and seasonal employees. 4B4 adopts resolution 7262, setting 2013 wages and salaries for part-time fire department employees. 4B5 approves the job description, authorizes an advertisement for bid for vacant administrative assistant position in the Public Works Department. 4C1 authorizes the purchase of 16 new group cycle bikes from Second Wind Exercise, Inc., for $19,814.62. 4D1 was deferred from the agenda. 4E1 approves renewal of the school resource officer agreement between the independent school district 720 and the city of Shakopee for 2013. 4F1 approves the payment of bills and electronic transfers in the amount of $827,900, excuse me, $719.73. 4F2 approves the minutes of the city council minute meetings of November 7th and November 20th, 2012. 4F3 approves applications and grants massage therapist licenses to Kelly Peterson, Lacey Blake, and Crystal Magher. 4F4 adopts resolution number 7254, changing the regular city council meeting dates of January 1st and 15th, 2013, to January 8th and January 22nd, 2013. And finally, 4F5 approves the issuance of 32 tobacco licenses for 2013.
Okay, sir, any discussion on those items? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number five, recognition of involved citizens by city council. Is there anybody out there who would like to speak about an item that is not on the agenda this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item number six, proposed 2012-2013 tax levy and operating budget, resolution numbers 7258 and 7259. Ms. Linehan?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For those of you who've been on the council for some time, what you are dealing with tonight is a annual fairly consistent event that brings forward the culmination of a number of months of work on a annual budget, as well as the annual property tax levy. What we're hearing tonight is a public meeting. These used to be referred to as a truth in taxation, public hearings. They've been changed over many legislative actions, and it's a forum for public input on the 2013 budget, as well as the 2013 property tax levy. I'll provide an overview to the council, the audience, and the listening public of the items that we have worked through in the past few months, and at the end of this presentation, we'll talk through the actions that I'm requesting of the council. The first is the passage of the budget resolution, the second, the passage of the property tax levy. In September, a preliminary property tax levy was approved by the city council that allowed for a 4.5% property tax levy increase. That information was sent to the county, and as parcel-specific notices were mailed out to property owners, the information that had been approved by council was applied to these parcel-specific notices. Any questions before we proceed? Before you tonight, there were many meetings internally and with council at work sessions, where we worked through a number of issues and questions and changes to processes, adjustments to staffing, review of processes, and I'll overview a few of them that we've taken and discussed. One of the areas that came forward in this year's budget is an item called "new initiatives", and several of the items we'll work through tonight will give the overview of what items were brought up by council, brought up by staff, and were approved by the council to proceed into the budget year. First area of the budget is the general government. That is the area that consists of administration, the clerk's office, finance, those areas of election, and just kind of general administrative work. They're fairly consistent budgets with prior years, with the exception below. One of the areas with the new initiatives is discussion on downtown flower baskets. That's been allowed into the budget. Administration has requested a human resources technician to assist administration with a variety of human resource duties, and also allowing for costs to split the hometown messenger with recreation to tie into the recreation brochure. Finance has the area of the lodging tax, which means we record the revenues, as well as the offsetting payment to the TVB, as Angie at the chamber and I are meeting on tomorrow for next year's budget. This has been increased as a revenue source for 2013 based on some historical review, as well as the addition of a new hotel that will be coming into Shakopee in 2013. The public ser- whoops, got me back up here. Public safety is an area that's had a couple of adjustments beyond just their operational. There's the addition of a crime prevention specialist position. Their equipment rent, and that's an internal service fund that the city operates, that has been increased to reflect adjustments to the current life and the useful life, as well as the replacement value. Those are items that were reviewed internally extensively with the fleet crew of the Public Works Division. Fire department was a conversation that took multiple work sessions. There was an addition, an initial proposal that allowed for four additional full-time firefighters. We've allowed for six months of their work in 2013. And the reduction of equipment run rent to reflect a little bit more accuracy and update to equipment that we're now realizing may have a longer useful life, yet that would result in a lower rent. The one item that has been eliminated from the fire department initial budget has been the part-time firefighter request that was discussed. That has been removed for a work session in October. The Public Works budget was the most consistent of all that came through, in that their items line to line have been maintained fairly consistent with prior years. We have been reviewing again the increase in equipment rent to their department as the Public Works is facing some mandates and additional costs for equipment needs that we've discussed during a number of meetings. There are costs that will be borne by the fleet department based on the increased environmental discussions that are ongoing with certain equipment. Those are reflected in this year's budget. One of the areas that we are also working on is a discussion with the outside entities that currently use the fueling facility, the car wash, the truck wash, to ensure that we are allowing for cost coverage of not only the operation of the equipment, but the future replacement and the maintenance. Culture and recreation, again, fairly consistent with prior year's budgets, but there has been the addition of a position called the natural resource technician. This is a position that had originally been in the city's budget some years back and has now been brought back in. There are some new pieces of equipment in this department, which has increased the rental equipment rates, and the fees in the culture and recreation area have been increased based on increased fees as recommended by the Park and Recreation Board. One area of the budget this year that's larger and a little bit more detailed than previous years has been transfers. Now, transfers are activities that are accounting-based, but what they do is, in summary, there is a transfer here and a transfer in from the sewer fund and the storm water or surface water funds. These are enterprise funds of the city. They are actually run like a business as an enterprise fund, and as such, pay a portion of the administrative costs back to the general fund for the payroll preparation, the accounts payable, the records maintenance, fleet management, et cetera. That has been increased from the prior year. As these transfers and administrative fees have been held flat for about six years, there needed to be a substantial adjustment to allow for the actual costs. The transfers out that are applied to the 2013 budget are substantial, but they are well reflective of what we've discussed in great detail during the budget process. One of the areas that we've spent considerable time on, both in the capital improvement plan or CIP meetings, is the need to fund the infrastructure of the city. This is the first year we have put a dedicated funding transfer out of the general fund, that's a portion of the property tax levy, to apply to the CIP fund to the amount of $500,000. As you are aware, that is not a significant amount in the full scheme of the CIP. It's a small amount. It's a start, but there are a lot of upcoming costs, and I would anticipate that in future years, this number will continue to be increased. There was a request by the EDAC to implement a facade loan program. That is a request of $150,000 transfer to the EDA. That is a standalone special revenue fund. There is also the $80,000 annual EDA levy, which is put forward for operations of the EDA. There is a position that has been requested that we'll get into as we get into the initiatives, but it is a position relating to an economic development specialist that would work solely with the economic development needs of the city. And the final transfer in 2013 is $60,000 to be applied toward the debt service, specifically the Fund 3038, which has the most significant debt service payment each year. The tax capacity rates of the city, as with every entity, are an area of discussion, but they're also not the most easily understood. Tax capacity rates are applied to, let me pull this up here, the city, which is the purple, the school, red, county. These rates each year are basically determined from the market value of the city divided by the levy. When the levy is held flat, they do not increase. When the levy is increased, they typically increase. One of the factors that has played into property tax rate comparison difficulties has been, as you can go back historically, a year ago, we spent a lot of time talking about market value exclusion. It was a legislative action, and it pretty much rewrote comparability of property tax rates around cities. It makes it very difficult to historically go back to, let's say, 2010, take a look at a tax rate and compare it, because the whole structure of your property tax system changed. What I can tell you is, from a comparability standpoint, by making a 4.5% levy adjustment from 2012 to 2013, your city's tax rate went from 36.65 to 42.058. One of the factors that I know a lot of organizations look at, has some comparability, but maybe not what everyone can really glean a lot of information from, is tax rates of comparable or, in this case, close proximity cities. Now, as we talked about, market value exclusion has made a big change in how people's tax rates come through. Belle Plaine has seen a significant jump since the prior, prior structure. Some cities, such as Prior Lake, don't see a lot of effect at all. Shakopee, Shakopee has maintained a fairly consistent and close levy, but there are cities within Scott County that are seeing some fairly significant jumps, and that, that is a difficult discussion to have, because again, one, you're losing your comparability from your earlier years, and two, depending on how your tax structure is established in your community, how much commercial industrial, how much residential, how much TIF, how much fiscal disparities, these numbers can be very difficult to compare. One of the things I would recommend that we look at in future years, and this will be occurring next year, is I'd like suggestions from the council on comparable communities that they feel we would need to bring forward to compare ourselves with, not just close proximity, but communities that face similar decisions on their budgets. The tax capacity of a city is defined and provided by Scott County. What we are providing here is one of the most interesting areas that has changed in the teen years of the, of the 2000s. Tax capacity for a city, for a lot of cities, if you recall, there was an article in the Sunday Tribune about this, tax capacity of many communities is declining. Values of homes, values of a lot of properties have been declining. What that results in is a declining tax capacity. When your value declines, typically, it, it can result in lower taxes, but not always. It's not a one-on-one consistent relationship. The reduction in tax capacity, and specifically neck tax capacity, which is when you reduce it by TIF and fiscal disparities, has declined from pay 12 of $35 million down to $32 million, or roughly an 8% decline. We are hearing from Scott County that they anticipate that these will be reversing, that we will see increases in value for the pay 14. That will remain to be seen. We'll watch that. As far as the composition of what makes up commercial industrial versus residential homestead, roughly, we're looking at about a 42% composition of commercial industrial and a 51% tax capacity for, for a homestead. This is another component that has brought about a lot of frustration in communities in that estimated market value of homes. 2012, the county's estimate for average estimated market value is roughly $192,000. For 2013, it declined to $170,000. Again, Scott County in discussions and looking at early assessment data for 2014 is saying they expect to see that change and go upward. This is a graph that gives a detail to the public and to, I think, a lot of individuals who may not have a real handle on what, you know, what is the composition of your community? Well, in Shakopee, it's 65% roughly residential improved is the terminology used by the county, if you ever see that. It's primarily the majority of residential. You have a very small percentage, 4% of apartment, very little residential vacant land, but commercial industrial of a higher level, very small agricultural, some other, you know, very small limited amounts of railroad, et cetera. As I referred to before, the market value exclusion, and for anyone who would like to get an update on this, you can go to the League of Minnesota Cities website where they have Market Value 101 training. You can see it in a video or pull it up in paper, has probably had the most impact on the whole property tax system in a number of years. We anticipated after their action in 2011 that the legislature may address this in 2012. They did not. So it was not adjusted. The market value credit wasn't eliminated. There was a lot of discussion that this would happen, but it simply did not occur with the divisive issues that the legislature was facing. The homestead market value exclusion reduces the taxable value of qualifying homesteads. Doesn't apply to commercial industrial. What it does do is, even though your property value decreases, your property tax may increase. It's not consistent. We cannot give you for sure's. This is just simply one of the factors that has come about by the implementation of this legislative action. I think the most important part about this is a piece that seems to be consistent across the board. By eliminating the credit, the state saves $260 million per year. In Scott County, this means a total of almost $6 million in credits that previously were paid by the state to local governments are now paid by the property tax owner. It is simply that, that shift you hear so much about in the media of the shift from the state to the local. This is a classic example of what happens. The tax rate in Shakopee has been fairly consistent up until this 2013 levy. There has been a fairly flat levy from '09, '10, '11, '12. '13 has been the increase of 4.5 based on the preliminary levy. The tax levy dollars, and again, this gets pretty much back to where we were back in the era of the preliminary levy. The property tax levy includes the portion of the general levy, which is what provides for the general fund, a fire referendum levy. This is the levy that was approved by voters to build the fire station on Veerling. We only levy a portion of the annual debt service at this point, but we've, and I am requesting a $30,000 increase in that levy as we need to bring that amount up for the meeting of the bond expectations to the bondholders. Your operating budget initiated with revenue analysis and expenditure review from May to July by city staff. Council and staff began discussions in late July, August into September. We set a preliminary tax levy and a preliminary budget that was certified to Scott County by September 15th. During the upcoming months, as you recall, we had a work session relating to fire, refined the budget. Tonight is the public meeting and the adoption of the tax levy. Upon adoption of the tax levy, it is certified to Scott County. Upon approval of the budget, the information is forwarded to the state based on the requirements and reports that they are requesting. So in summary, there are several categories of revenue. We are looking at a slight increase in revenues of the general fund from 20,000, I'm sorry, $20,121,000 to an increase of These are primarily composed of intergovernmental revenue. Those are some dollars that we receive, whether it's police state aid, fire state aid, municipal state aid for maintenance work, other inter, intergovernmental grants and aids. That is where we're primarily seeing the most increase at this point. Expenditures for the city, by category, the 2012 budget had approximately $20,121,000. The 2013 has $20,492. Added to that this year are a transfer in of those enterprise fund dollars and a transfer out of the $860,000, primarily consisting of the capital outlay and the EDA. The general fund revenues, as have been pretty consistent year after year, are comprised of property taxes. It's just simply the most substantial portion of this city's revenue. You are not a recipient of local government aid, like many cities are, which would be an intergovernmental revenue. There, that is the primary component. This is what keeps your city going. The city receives it in July, receives it in December. You need to cash flow your city for six months each year, from the point you get your last settlement to the first of the year. The charges for services are another category. What that's primarily consisting of is the payments received from Shakopee Public Utilities. Those are the revenues received for the operations of the electric and the water. The general fund budget expenditures, again, very consistent. Primary composition of your expenditures, public safety. Police and fire inspections, those are very, very labor-intensive and very equipment-intensive, training-intensive. They require significant funding. They're also most positions that are on-call 24/7. When you pull up just about any general government's activities, you will see this is going to be your primary area. This is promptly followed by culture and recreation, as you have a large area of your city's operations relating to the amenities you're providing your community related to park and rec. General government, which is comprised of the areas we talked about earlier, followed by public works. Now, in this public works, there is not the capital outlay. That's a separate fund. That's a capital improvement fund, so those dollars are not included in here. When we take a look at the general fund operations for population, you've maintained you've maintained fairly flat full-time equivalency. This is your population based on what we're getting from the most current demographers. You've maintained fairly flat full-time positions. There have been increases this year based on the discussions and the new initiatives that were presented. The expenditures have risen based on two factors. One, where are we really showing some of the actual costs of the expenditures? But more importantly, there have been increases specifically, as we've seen, in public safety and public works and pretty much across the board, that have caused this budget to move forward based on the needs and the requests of the staff and the council. The tax levy for twenty-thirteen is based on the following. We started with a twenty-twelve tax levy, fourteen million seven-one-seven-four-thirty-eight. To that, we've increased a four-point-five percent increase on the preliminary levy for a final levy that was preliminarily certified to the county of fifteen-three-seventy-nine-seven-twenty-three. The referendum levy for the fire department increased thirty thousand from one-twenty to one-fifty. What is before you tonight as a council is approval of the resolutions that were provided in your packet that allowed for the following. Resolution seven-two-five-eight. This resolution is presented, provides you with a levy with the four-point-five percent increase and the thirty thousand dollar increase to fire. You are asked to consider and approve that. The second resolution, number seven-two-five-nine, provides an overview of the categories within the general fund budget, allowing for a budget expenditure of twenty-one million three-fifty-two-two-twelve. I'll be glad to entertain any questions. But before I do, I just want to say a very special thank you to the department heads, to the staff, to the council. This is not an easy process. The cooperation and the coordination and the general really good information that came across from people is admirable, and I want to thank them.
Perfect. Thank you, Julie. I'll echo that as well. A big thank you to you for all your work on this and department heads and Mark and everyone who's been involved. It's been a learning process for myself as to how this all works and what we need to do. So thank you for all your patience and working with me on it. All right, questions from council? For Julie. None? Councilor Clay.
The four-point-five percent, that would be to fund all of our initial things, but then we've since decided to wait on the extra part-time fire
Right.
department personnel, so if they are then out of, if they are then out of the budget, that brings us to what percentage?
If you chose to reduce the forty thousand from the levy, I want to explain this in a way that doesn't get too confusing. For each point on the property tax rate, let's say you take a four-point-five percent increase, it's roughly a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. So if you're looking at tax rate, or are you looking at just saying, let's take forty thousand off of this levy? Or, if I can, as your finance director, make another recommendation, my recommendation is to take that forty thousand dollars, keep it in your levy and use it to apply to your debt service or your capital. Just a consideration I would like to present to council.
Which we've kind of fudged and hedged on and should be putting more money towards, but...
Yes. Yes, and as your finance director, I feel it's important to explain that these are dedicated expenditures that you have, and it is important to apply the funding needed to pay them. Each time someone comes forward with either a road project, a county project, a state project, a trail project, a park project, each one of these requires funding, or additional operational, or future equipment. That has not always historically been followed by the funding. There's a point where this has to be very closely associated with each practice you have of approving or reviewing a project that a dedicated funding sources to either a future levy or additional fees has to pay for some of this, or there has to be a defined reduction somewhere else.
You have more? No? Okay. Any other discussion? Councilor Sherman.
So Julie, what was the amount then needed to take the increase down a point?
One hundred and forty-seven thousand.
One hundred and forty-seven.
Right, roughly. I was working with the individuals out of Scott County today, and we were able to get it fairly concise, and we feel that if you have a, roughly, a reduction of four-point-five and you want to bring it down to three-point-five, you drop about a hundred and forty-seven thousand out of your revenues.
Because, well, the one point of discussion that we've had has been the addition of full-time exempt positions. So we've got our list here that Julie has for us.
Let me put this piece up. And this has been, I'll expand this a little, make sure we can see it. These have been the positions that are remaining, as well as the projects and the funding of the debt increase, that have remained in this budget that you're reviewing tonight. These are the positions, the projects, and the debt. The budget and the four-point-five percent increase that you have in front of you provides for these activities.
But I'm not seeing the part-time firefighters on this list.
The part, those are full-time firefighters on the list. The forty thousand has already been taken out.
Okay, so I was, I must have misspoke, or you must have understood me, when I was talking about the part-time firefighters.
Right.
They are already out of this
Yes.
for the
But the levy has not been reduced. If that's, I think I see what you're saying is, is that out of the budget? Yes, it is. We reduced it.
But not out of the levy?
But not out of the levy.
Okay, I got you. All right.
Councilor Sherman, were you done? Did you have?
Oh, you can go ahead.
Okay, Councilor Lehman.
I do, but I'll wait.
Is there anything else that's been removed that, but the amount that we're taxing for has not changed?
We, let me pull this up. We had already, as in several meetings, there had been discussions of certain items at one of the work sessions of certain, of the initiatives that were removed. That's this listing.
But these were never in the preliminary levy?
They were not in the preliminary levy.
Right.
Okay, you just said that the six on-call fire department, them are full-time, but the part-time ones are still in the levy. They're just not showed as positions.
No, they're in the levy and they're in, oh, I, okay, I see what you're saying. The forty thousand was removed from the budget, but that levy was not reduced by the forty.
Why not?
Because there are a lot of unfunded things in your twenty-thirteen budget, including debt and capital.
So I'll ask the same question again. Is there anything else that we as a council said, please remove, but you did not?
I removed it from the budget. I did not remove it from the levy.
So we're going to collect the dollars for that, but we're not planning on using it for that?
We're not using it. We're using it for other general fund expenditures.
Okay, is there any?
But as a council, if you wish to remove it from the levy, you can certainly make that action.
Is there any other dollars that we're levying for that are supposed to go somewhere that we're not going to use for, that has gone somewhere else that we don't know about?
The only thing we take out of there was that forty.
Just for clarification then, Julie, it's forty thousand dollars if that's removed from the levy, that would, the four-point-five percent would then be four-point-two or something like that.
Roughly four-point, yeah, four-point-three-something.
Councilor Sherman.
So that's where with the positions, if you go back to the previous sheet, Julie, with the proposed personnel additions.
Right.
If we were to not move forward in twenty-thirteen and perhaps twenty-fourteen might be a better year for us to consider adding the economic development specialist, HR technician, and natural resources technician, that's about two hundred thousand right there. That I would be in support of doing.
Okay. Councilor Lehman.
Yeah, I would add getting rid of the flower baskets.
Okay. If we want to, similar to the way we're doing during the preliminary budget cycle, if we want to, at this time, remove or discuss anything to be removed or added from this budget, let's have a motion and a second, and then we'll...
Mr. Mayor, although this is not technically a public hearing, it was notice to the public, and so before taking any action or doing a motion, you might want to see if there's someone from the public that wants to speak to the budget and the levy, then you can do your motions.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anybody from the audience who'd like to speak at the public meeting this evening? Yes, sir. Come on up to the microphone and sign in with your name and address, please, at the sheet that's up there.
Put your name, address, and phone number there.
Hi, I moved to Shakopee around a year and a half. My name is Venkata Pooti, so just in case.
Where do you live, sir?
I'm sorry?
Where do you live?
I live in Shakopee.
Yeah, what's your address? You just have to say it.
Okay, Oak Ridge Trail, in, on Eagle Creek.
Okay, good note.
So I can give you the directions if you want.
Just the address is good.
So when I moved in here, it's a brand-new neighborhood. So I got a tax, which was, I had a tax of X amount, and then it is bumped up by two X after a year. Now I got a three X. So it is bumped up by fifty percent to what I'm paying. So it's like three times to what I agree, so I have total, no understanding of what exactly the details that have been discussed. I have no idea what has been talked about. One graph I understood is there are some lot of culture and recreation activity where there is a lot of spend that has been done. So I do not know, I do not hear anything that has been cut down from what has been done in the past versus all we have, all we have heard is everything has been added up to the existing budget, account for the cost. Nothing has been cut down. So I do not know. And then the total number of population increase is thirty-seven thousand to thirty-eight thousand something. So increase in population should add revenue to the organization, which should account for the, support the existing expenditure, right? So if there is an expenditure increase because of the increase in population, the revenue that is coming from the increase in population should also account for that, right? I do not, I haven't seen why there is a four-point-five increase all of a sudden.
Feel free to stick around. Okay, I'd like to just do a kind of a quick overview on that. And I understand what you're saying is that if there's a increasing population, you have an increasing revenue. The only way the city increases any of its revenue, because the majority of our property taxes make up our revenues, is if we increase the levy. That is the only way we receive increased revenue. We don't get a per-population revenue. The only, the typical percentage of our revenues is property tax levy. That has been held flat for about four or five years.
I don't think so.
No, the levy, the levy has been held flat. That's the majority of our funds. The property tax levy is what is being discussed tonight. That is what is the source of revenue that is certified to the county that is collected when you receive a property tax statement in April, and it's spread over the base of the residence, the commercial, the industrial, and the other bases of property. Example, if you bring a new business to town and it brings with it added value of two million dollars market value, but you do not increase your levy, you receive no additional revenue from this new business coming to town. If a levy is held flat, there is no additional new revenue. Okay? Does that help? Has there been additions and has there been cuts? Yes, there has. There's been a lot of discussions and a lot of things that have been brought forward, where we've restructured positions, we've filled positions differently. We're a labor-intensive organization because what we do is provide services, not so much widgets and such. When we have to proceed and provide services, as an example, public safety, police, fire, there are standards, there are mandates, there are different processes that we are required to follow, where we can't just arbitrarily decide not to follow them. We have to meet the standards that are in place, oftentimes resulting in additional costs that are out of our control. Okay? Does that help?
And sir, 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 you have to, you have to address us at the microphone and ask specific questions to us, please.
Sure.
Hold on, just a second, sir.
Mr. Pooti, you had indicated that this is a new neighborhood. How old is your home?
Around two years.
Okay, I think probably one of the significant increases in terms of why it's gone up as a percentage is that the first year you were there, you were probably being taxed as the value of the lot two years ago.
I agree with that.
Which is the, okay, so it's open that way. So just a comparison going up twice and then three times, that's, you have to put that into perspective. That's based on raw land versus your finished home now.
I agree. So for the first time, I agree with the, when it became two X, right? I agree it is because of land versus homestead, all the stuff. But when it become three X, that's when the concern comes in picture. Why it became three X all of a sudden, why should I pay fifty percent of what I'm paying already more, one-hundred-and-fifty percent more than what I'm paying? So that's when, so it's, you know, there's definitely, it's a good chunk of money that has been taken from the pocket, and it's a lot of, especially in the current economic situation, it is definitely a load on the people or the residents. It is a discouragement to be, for the people who are trying to have their own single-family homes, right? It is actually an encouragement, people go back to apartments, which reduces the property tax, which you are working on, right? What I would prefer, what I would see is that I would request to find ways on how to reduce this tax and not increase this much all of a sudden. There should not be so much of spike one shot. There can be a gradual increase, but not like a spike of this kind. Really, if you can see a ways of reducing this, not to this point. This is too much of responsibility given to the shoulder of individual, single-family owners.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilor Lehman.
Let me see if I can give you a scenario that maybe it's just a little bit easier to follow and understand. And by all means, anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure I'm not. If you had a house in a town and the house was valued at a dollar, and you taxed that house at ten percent, and you got a dime out of that dollar, and now the value of that house went from one dollar down to fifty cents.
Okay.
What's ten percent of fifty cents?
Fifty cents.
Okay.
So five cents.
You just cut your revenue in half without doing anything, just because the value of that property has now dropped.
Okay.
Okay? In order to make up the same dollar off that same piece, or the same dime off that same piece of property, you'd have to raise the rate of taxation on that property to get the same dime out of that same property. Okay? So even if you're not necessarily getting more dollars off the property, the rate of taxation would have to double in that example, even though the amount of money taken would be the same. And instead of looking at it as one individual property, it's looked at as the tax capacity of the whole community at large. Okay, there's, some houses might be increasing in value because they were a lot and now they're taxed as a house and a lot, but there's more that are actually dropping in value at the same time. So it kind of complicates it. But I do agree that now in this economic climate, we need to be very frugal with the taxpayers' money. And unfortunately, in this budget cycle, I disagree that we haven't done that, and I know it's impacting people.
Yep.
But I'm just one voice of reason, so...
So even if I play that logic which you have conveyed, I'm sorry.
All right, sir, we're gonna, we are, everybody's tax item is... Julie will help work through that and see, because everyone's individual tax statement is going to be different, especially with the market value exclusions now, which have thrown everything out of whack, especially when you're trying to compare it to previous years. And so if you have specific questions and things, Julie would love to help you out, and your points have been well taken. So thank you for coming and speaking to us.
So one thing I would like to know is that, is there a value? is there a value to the feedback that is coming from the people or it's just written on the store? So if it is the case, then there's no, you know, I'm spending almost an hour here, leaving my family, if it is the case, I I what I want to know is that, then I don't need to come.
I get a value out of it.
Your points, yeah, your points are very well taken.
I'm sorry being, uh, straight on it, but I just want to know what it is.
I get a value out of it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sean Nelson at, uh, six oh three East Eighth Avenue. I just wanted to say that, um, I found the flower baskets to be a bad idea when it started, and I'd say in this time of getting a dime out of a fifty cent house, uh, it's grossly inappropriate. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir.
Okay, my name is Anwar Kalim, one two five one First Avenue East. Uh, I own two businesses, two hotels in Shakopee, and I just worried about this tax increase. I just have a general remark, you know, if I'm as a businessman, when my resources of revenues decrease, I try to reduce my expenses. But here, what we hear is more and more spending, more and more spending, more and more spending. I mean, I see over here, one of the jobs is to look after the, uh, strong financial health of the city. How about the financial health of the residents and the businesses in Shakopee, you know? Who looks after them, you know? What, where do we go, you know, when our revenues are incre- not increasing, we are, our revenues are decreasing, our values are not going up, and still we have to pay more, where do we bring this money from, you know?
Thank you, sir, and your, um, with back of the market value exclusion, it is hitting commercial and industrial and larger property owners. Might, like, if you look at a couple of the slides that Julie had put up, twenty seven percent of the property in Shakopee is in commercial industrial, and they pay forty nine percent of the taxes, and with the market value exclusion, that changed uh, to that, to have a lot more of the burden put on commercial, industrial from, uh, what the state has done with that, which I don't, I don't think is right, but nevertheless, that's what they've done, and so vast majority of what, um, especially commercial, industrial and retail and hotels are seeing in their, um, in their out of pocket money is due specifically to that market value exclusion, um, and completely independent of what we are, and absolutely, I I do agree with you completely that we are, uh, that we are looking at a four and a half percent increase in the, uh, levy for the city, but I also believe that that will, um, improve things to help make sure, uh, that our roads work and that that is what helps make your business run and to make sure that we have safe, uh, community and roads for people to drive on, and otherwise businesses wouldn't be able to be here at all, and so that's part of the investment in doing that. So that's just my rebuttal to that.
No, I mean, what I was trying to say, where do I bring this money from? It's not only four and a half percent for us. My tax increase is eight point one percent total from everywhere, you know, it's not only four and a half percent, you know? I mean, for me as a businessman, when I have to survive, I reduce my expenses. I don't increase my expenses because I don't have resources to, I mean, uh, do all that, all those things, you know? So my just question is that is someone considering that are the residents, are the businesses are able to pay that man or just you just have to squeeze them nowhere from back borrow steal, we have to pay that, you know? I mean, someone needs to look, consider that point also, are we able to? Or do we have the capacity to pay those taxes or it's just your expenses and that's it, you know, and I mean, you have to squeeze the people around over here, you know? I mean, that's where I, that's what I'm thinking, you know, that's what I'm kind of upset about, you know?
Yep, I understand.
Where do I bring the money from to pay you, you know? And my second point is I heard about, uh, some lodging tax increase, but we didn't, that was not explained, I don't know what that was.
Yeah, sure.
The lodging tax increase is not an increase on what you are paying. It is simply taking the budget revenue estimate and basing it more on historical amounts, plus the fact that there is a new hotel coming into town, which will bring more revenue, which increase the budget estimate. There is no increase to your lodging tax percent. That is set by state law.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Alright, last call? Sir?
Got to sign in. Uh, Lon Dugan, uh, nine one seven seven Boiling Springs Lane. Uh, I just have a question. Would it be possible to give a brief description of what those positions up there, uh, actually do? Uh, I I mean, I see human resources technician. What does a human resources technician actually do? And the other thing, I guess, that kind of goes along with that is if a business were to add an employee, they would have to say that adding this employee is actually going to, uh, increase my revenue, it's going to bring in more money, it's going to, I would like to know what each of those positions will actually produce in terms of benefiting the city.
Mr. McNeil?
We have to do that. Um, there are a variety of things there in different departments. Just going from the top, the economic development specialist, right now, economic development activities are something that uh, are handled by a a number of existing staff. They are the folks that, uh, respond to prospects that are looking to move into Shakopee or to expand uh, those that are here. We have proposed to add a specific, uh, position, unique for economic development. They will continue to work with staff that we have, and we'll also work with, uh, something that the county is starting to garner economic development countywide in addition to Shakopee. The human resources technician, right now, we have about one and a half positions that take care of all of the training, the pay, the insurance, the benefits, all those things for about a hundred and twenty-three full-time employees, forty-seven part-time firefighters and many part-time.
Anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two hundred part-timers, depending on the time of year.
Those are the sorts of things that, right now, we're, when we have to hire a position, it's very stressful because there are a number of things that don't get done. Adding that position will allow us to make sure that we comply with state and federal laws regarding, uh, human resources and just basically make things work better within, uh, the city organization. Natural resources technician was something that was cut from the, uh, budget about three years ago. That takes care of a number of things that relate to development, to Emerald Ash Bor that's coming to the community, those sorts of things, we also have had some quality of life issues, whether it's air quality or odors or things such as that water quality, that that position will be looking to do. And finally, the crime prevention specialist is something that the police chief has proposed right now, we have a sworn officer who handles the, uh, uh, multiple family, uh, dwellings, the apartment buildings in the community. We think that it can be done, uh, more effectively by having a non-sworn officer, meaning something a position that could be, uh, paid at a lesser rate so that we can return that sworn officer, uh, to the streets. Anything else that I've missed, department heads?
You jumped over the firefighters, Mark.
I'm sorry, and, uh, uh, right now, one of the significant problems that we have with Shakopee is daytime availability for firefighters. We have, uh, forty-five right now part-time firefighters, only a few of which are available to respond to calls during the normal business day, Monday through Friday. Shakopee is not unique, we have, uh, cities nationwide that are dealing with that. One of the things that we have looked at doing is going, is going to a full-time firefighter combination department. So this would propose to add four full-time people who would staff and would be able to respond during the critical hours, Monday through Friday, during the workday. Evenings, that would be the normal part-time firefighters responding as we would see fit. This one right now shows one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. That's actually six months of, uh, part-time position. If this is added, that means in two thousand fourteen, it would be the full, full freight.
For four people?
Correct.
Okay. The firefighters was the only one I understood.
Okay, I'm sorry. Quite frankly, it's because that's that's unique to to government sort of work.
So so to follow up on that, my question would be, those figures that you have listed at the end there, are those salaries? Or is that the total cost? Is that salaries and benefits? Is that, because, uh, for example, uh, I've never made more than forty thousand dollars in a year, and I see that you've got a, uh, you've got a natural resources technician up there at fifty seven thousand. Boy, I'd, where do I apply for that one?
Those are salaries and benefits, however, not all of those are for full years. Some of them start March first, some of them start July first, so those would be prorated to that. The rates that we have are.
That's not an improvement.
Well, that, but that's what it is.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Dugan. Alright, last call again? Alright, thank you, everyone, for your, uh, opinion.
Can I ask again? Come on up.
Yeah, it, uh, one thing.
Just one thing. So going back to the firefighter thing, uh, I'm not sure whether this can be a proposal or something. You know, at a given instant of time, n- uh, not all the firefighters within the county are busy or engaged, right? So do, is it possible that the other counties firefighters may be involved in a in in situation where it is necessary, while we do not need to hire more people and then cut down the cost? I'm not sure whether that can be hacked, uh, that can be possible. So I'm I'm looking for ways to cut down the cost than burden the people in the city.
Yes, I am very glad to tell you that we're on top of that. Um, we are working extremely closely with, there's a, uh, countywide organization that we are part of, uh, that we are working on that. It is not ready to go yet, but that is for the future to help reduce our, our, uh, increases for the future, and so we are working on, uh, and and believe me when I say, and if you've been watching what we've been doing over the last three, four months in having extensive discussions over each of these items, um, and passionate discussions over each of these items as to why they're in here and a lot of things that aren't in here. And, um, to what you talked about before, we did also cut quite a few things as well, um, and had a lot of discussion over those types of things. Um, that everything is in here for a reason, um, and like the firefighters, we are working to the very best of our abilities as a city to reduce the costs and improve services and 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 make make Shakopee, um, one of the best places to live, and so this is part of that, and so we are working really hard to make sure that that happens because we we know and understand that taxes are extremely important to everybody. Um, and and that's, we're doing our, uh, at least I'm doing my very best, um, and I know everybody up here is doing their very best, and we have different opinions on that, and that is one thing that at least three fifths of the council thinks, um, each of these items, at least three fifths of the council thinks needs to be in there, so that's how it, how it got in here, and that's how it's in the, in the budget. So there's been, like I said, significant discussion over each of these items, and that is one thing that we are looking at is is working with other communities for fire, um, fire coverage. Alright?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, and, uh, one last thing, if I may ask. Uh, I was not able to convince myself or based on what exactly is the delta increase in spike, what exactly we are doing different in two thousand thirteen to what is not there in two thousand twelve? All we are saying is that the regular maintenance activities which are ongoing activities is being taken into consideration. There isn't any delta increase or a new change that I incorporate in the county, which says that this is the one which is giving the cost more. It is not saying it out. Or it is not explicitly spelled out. This is the one which is taking more cost assets you have to pay. It is not saying. All we are saying is the firefighting, road construction, all those stuff are the regular ongoing activities which are being there in two thousand twelve, two thousand eleven or in the past. What exactly is the difference, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, Councilman Lehman?
The, uh, item under projects funding for twenty thirteen Capital Streets, five hundred thousand on that screen, that's new for twenty thirteen compared to twenty twelve. So that's a, that's a half million dollar.
Yeah, it's a facade loan program.
Yep.
Um, and.
And the, some of the positions on top are doing also.
So that's like point three percent.
Are we talking about the money that we're saving or getting handled on for the, we have a a road reconstruction bubble coming up. Twenty years ago, the city, when the bypass came through and stuff, the city expanded greatly. Within just a a few years, we added fifty-four miles of streets, if I remember serves.
We have a hundred and fifty miles of street and forty-five percent of our streets have been built since ninety-five.
So we've got all these streets that are, we developers built when they created these new developments, but now twenty years later, they need to be resurfaced, and that's all coming at one, you know, short period of time in the next few years, so a lot of that five hundred thousand dollars we're setting aside now is just saving up to meet the needs for when all those roads need to be worked on all, you know, all at one time. And and the other thing, eh, of the increase, maybe when the the economy went downhill, you know, a number of years ago, we spent as a city the last four or five years not spending or not increasing spending at at all, really, we've like, you know, we've, when employees have have retired or or moved on, they they haven't been replaced, we've we've, um, lowered our expense, our spending for, uh, debt service, things like that, as much as we could to kind of get us by this, this bad economic time that we've gone through. But, you know, for all, all everything we've been seeing now, these last, uh, ten to twelve months, it, you know, the economy is at least flattened out and is improving. And we're we're trying to now stay a little bit ahead of the curve and and keep Shakopee as a growing and competitive entity within this metropolitan area. One, one of the things that we enjoy now and have for quite a few years is a relatively low property taxes compared to the other cities around us, not just in this county, but the metropolitan area. And in a large part because we've always been very, um, proactive and and have encouraged commercial industrial properties to come into the city. And commercial industrial properties pay a larger percent of their market value in taxes than homes do, so you know, they have a a pretty significant impact. Not to mention the 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 jobs that they bring in and the extra money that, you know, that it adds to the economy. So we we are talking about a four, four and a half percent increase in levy and all, in large part, it's to start restaffing from the deficit that we've created over the past few years when the, when the, we were trying to get through this, you know, bad economy. And part of it is like hiring this new economic development specialist. It's it's hard to say that having this new person come on is, we can't just say we're guaranteed that with this new employee, we're going to get so much more in tax base, but you know, we have to, you know, go under the assumption that we're the more money and more effort and that we spend bringing and encouraging more business and commercial industrial tax base in the city, eventually, even if we have to offer some tax-infinancing or some other incentives in the short term, but, you know, now is the time when the economy's starting to pick up again, is to really get out there and try to get that, build up this commercial industrial tax base in Shakopee so that not next year, the year after, but when we look ahead, you know, five, six, ten years, you know, fifteen years from now, looking ahead, the the people who are going to be living in the, in the city then are going to be in continue to enjoy, you know, some of the lower tax rates, property tax rates that we living here now are enjoying because fifteen, twenty years ago, people on the council and stuff work to bring in the businesses that we already have here now. Uh, we're, we're just trying to, you know, it's not spending money is not the same thing as saving money, or it's just not necessarily being fiscally wise just because you're not spending money. Sometimes the best thing that, and the most fiscally sound and wise thing to do in the long term is to spend some money if you're doing it in the right way and doing it at the right time. I spent, you know, a few thousand dollars reshingling my house this fall because it needed it. I could have saved myself a few thousand dollars if I had not done that, but I run the risk of the, you know, water getting in and causing more damage to the house, and in the long run, it's going to cost me more, and then I still would have to pay to have the house, the roof reshingled anyway. I mean, there's, there's investments that need to be made at the right time, you know, not before they're necessary, but when they are necessary, you make those investments and, you know, to look forward and and to try to create a, a sound economic future for residents and it's, we're talking about a, a budget that's just for this coming year, but we're also trying to look ahead the next five, ten, twenty years and and make some investments there that hopefully will be a benefit to everybody down the road. But it it doesn't. But, it, it doesn't do much for, you know, our political fortunes as, as politicians when we have to, you know, stand before you and say, I think we should spend a little bit more money. You know, it's, it's always, sounds better if you say, oh, we can't spend any money. We've got to cut, cut, keep taxes flat or keep taxes down regardless of, you know, what effect that might have on our, our city in, in the years ahead. I've talked too much, I'll shut up now. Thank you for your-
Just follow up on that.
All right, we, I'm sorry, sir, we've had a lot of follow-ups there. And if, other, other things you want to talk about, you can get in touch with us. And we'd love to individually speak with you and follow up with anything. But we've got to move on. Thank you, I appreciate you being here. All right, so, back to the items we are discussing here. One thing, since this is still up, I've spoken at length with downtown businesses about the downtown flower baskets. And we can, if we choose, cut this number in half because they will pay for all of the materials for the downtown, for the flower baskets as if the city can water them. So, I think that's a very good public-private use of money. And so, if we want, if anyone thinks that's a good idea, you can make a motion and get it seconded, and we can reduce that by sixty-five hundred dollars if we'd like. Or we can leave it where it is and discuss the rest of it. So, just letting people know that's an option. Council Lamon.
Motion to re, to cut the flower baskets by sixty-five hundred.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I, I think it's better to get a motion on the table with the, with the proposal and then make a motion to amend it because otherwise you're going to be cutting, you, you need a main motion to amend, otherwise you're just, you're going to be going piecemeal and I think you're going to get lost. I think it would be better to, to adopt a proposed resolution, any one you want. Doesn't have to be the four and a half one. Get one on the table and then amend it from there.
I'll draw my motion.
Okay. Council Whiting.
Mr. Mayor, you know, I haven't commented on this, but we have had a lot of discussion on this. And I, you know, I, and I agree with Councilman Clay. This is about stewardship for our city and looking to the future. So, with that, I, I will offer Resolution Number seventy-two fifty-eight, a resolution setting the twenty-twelve tax levy collectible in twenty thirteen and move its adoption as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Clay, discussion. Council Lamon.
So, now we've got a motion on the floor. This is the appropriate time?
Yes.
Make a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to cut the flower baskets by sixty-five hundred?
On the levies.
Okay.
A second?
Council Sherman, we have a second of that. So, I'm sorry, Jim, we are-
So, what this, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, so you've got the main motion on the floor. What my understanding of motion is, is to reduce the levy by sixty-five hundred dollars relative to the flower baskets. And then when you adopt the resolution later on, on the budget, it'll be taken out of the budget also.
Unless there's other motions that reduce it further.
Yes, that's, yes, yes, I'm just talking about this one.
Okay, motion has been made by Council Lamon, seconded by Council Sherman. Discussion on that motion.
I don't think it's a government's responsibility to water a business's flowers, period, at all. And if we are going to do it, I think we should do it consistently across the city, which would cost us much more than what's up there. So, I think we're picking and choosing winners and losers, which I think is a really poor way for tax dollars to be spent.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to one with Council Clay in dissent. Sorry, just making notes. All right, other items to discuss, Council Sherman.
I'd like to make a motion to reduce the levy by two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Taking out of the levy the part-time firefighters of forty K, the economic development specialist of seventy-two, one forty-six, human resources technician of sixty-seven, six, and the natural resources technician of fifty-seven, five ninety-six. That adds up to approximately two forty K.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it, but I think it's going to need a friendly amendment because I think the forty K has already been removed from the budget.
Not, not removed by time limit.
Okay, all right.
All right, and motion by Council Sherman, seconded by Council Lamon. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion fails two to three with Councilors Whiting, Clay, and Mayor Tabke in opposition, dissent. Council Clay.
Move to simply reduce the forty K, forty thousand for the part-time firefighters.
Council Lamon.
Second.
All right, motion by Council Clay, seconded by Council Lamon. Discussion on this item. Now, do we want to, I would rather see this go toward debt service and, and adding forty thousand dollars to, it's in the levy already, in the preliminary levy already. I would rather see it go to debt service and increasing what we're doing for debt service than to decrease the levy. My personal opinion. Council Lamon.
We've added thirty thousand to the debt service already on the fire bond. And we've added the five hundred thousand to the capital improvement, which wasn't there at all. So, not only are we spending more money, but we're saving more money. We're doing both in an economic climate. Granted, it's out of our cert, out of our control, but I don't think there's been enough weight put on the outside economic impacts, such as now the state is talking about taxing services, which hits everybody in, in the world in, in a state that uses any kind of services. The feds still can't get their debt battle under control, which looks like we're all going to end up getting a tax increase from there. And now we're getting a tax increase from the city and the county and the school and everything. The gentleman was, was right, there's only so much the average household can take before they just can't take it any longer and feasibly pay it. And where does that put the city at that point? So, no, I, I think, I'm actually really disappointed in this budget. It's probably the, one of the most disappointing budgets I've seen in, in the twelve years that I've served. But I, I, I respect and, and, and recognize the authority of this group as a body. Doesn't mean I have to agree with it. But I am disappointed in this budget this year, especially in this economic climate.
Council Whiting.
Good comment on that, Mr. Mayor. You know, we have been, we had a voter-approved levy for the fire referendum, and we are paying minimum payments. You know, we have bumped that up a little bit this year, but we're nowhere near the, was it two hundred and forty-eight thousand we're supposed to be collecting out of the taxpayers' money that they approved. So, we are making minimum payments. So, if we do keep that forty thousand, I think that's where it should go as to, to that, paying down that, that amount of that referendum bond.
Okay, any other discussion? Council Clay.
I, I agree that the debt service issue is, is important. And I'm anticipating that it's going to be a major part of our discussion next summer as we, you know, get into the next budget cycle. I'm also anticipating that by that time, we'll have a, a better idea as to just how much more the local economy and the, especially the real, real estate economy is, is, which is showing, all signs are showing improvement. But we'll have a better idea next summer just how much of an improvement it's, it's going to be. I think we'd, it'll put us in a better position to make some of those decisions on, on our debt service. That, I guess I just think it'd be better to put it off just another six months for, to the next cycle.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Two to three.
Councilor Whiting. Council Clay, what?
What was the, which motion are we?
Your, your forty thousand.
I forty thousand?
Yes.
I should have voted in favor of that then.
You could. I didn't, I didn't hear you vote at all. Did you vote in favor or against?
In favor.
In favor, okay, so it passes three to two. So, that reduces the levy, another forty thousand. All right, any other discussion on the final levy? All right, we'll vote now, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes three to two with Councilors Lamon and Sherman in dissent. We're good, Jim?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, yes, you're good on that one. You still need the resolution adopting the budget, but you're good on that one, yeah.
All right, thank you. Now, we need to talk about seventy-two fifty-nine. Council Whiting.
I'll offer Resolution Number seventy-two fifty-nine, a resolution adopting the twenty thirteen budget and move its adoption.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Clay, any discussion? Council Lamon.
Would that be a revised budget? Or does it not have to reflect any changes that we made in the levy?
Mr. Thompson.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the, as my understanding, Julie, correct me if I'm wrong, the budget that's before you does not include the forty thousand that you limit, but it does include the sixty-five hundred more for the flower baskets. So, it would be appropriate to move to amend to delete that line, that item from the budget.
I'll amend that motion to reflect that sixty-five hundred dollars from the flower basket budget.
Secondary is fine with that.
Very good, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes three to two with Councilors Lamon and Sherman in dissent.
Mr. Mayor?
Who's in hand?
I just want to confirm, making sure the council is seeing. But we're, this isn't rocket scientist, excuse the handwritten notes. You've gone from a levy of fifteen million, three seventy-nine, seven two-three, less the sixty-five hundred, less the forty thousand. It's a levy of fifteen million, three thirty-three, two twenty-three, roughly a four-point-two percent increase. Are there any questions? The budget will be revised to reflect the flower baskets out. The levy will be rewritten to have the amount of fifteen, three thirty-three, two twenty-three.
Mr. Mayor.
Council Whiting.
Julie, you had a slide at one point that reflected what this would cost to the average household. I think our median household was what, a hundred and seventy thousand? Is that something you could whip up out of your head?
Actually, if you bring it back, the small percent, excuse me, I start thinking. What we would be looking at was a slide that you were roughly saying the value is, okay, now I'm, now you got me.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, hang on, I've got this. Because this is the one you're thinking, what was the median value, mister?
Right.
Okay, it's here, it's just a matter of which one of the bazillion slides. Next year, I'm going for a smaller PowerPoint.
Sorry, I asked?
No, I can find it, it's just that it's like, I've got a lot of different paper here. Here it is. Oh, not off the top of my head. Because off the top of my head, I've completely forgotten where those numbers are. Here we go, this is it. Okay, hey, so you're looking at an average value went from seven twelve to seven twenty-four. You could reduce that roughly by four or five dollars. If I was going to give you a rough estimate on a value home of that, it'd be about seven hundred and twenty.
So, with the decrease in the, in the value of the house, it's, it doesn't reflect a lot of dollars.
It's, it's a very difficult year because let's fast forward next year and say, instead of the value dropping eleven percent, let's say you can keep a flat value, or better yet, let's say you go up five percent. You have a completely different picture.
A new game, yeah, right.
And if the market value on commercial industrial goes up instead of staying flat, that'll really skew next year's impact.
Thank you for all the work you've done on this.
I appreciate your patience.
And if they change the exclusion and all, that's really going to throw things for a lead.
That will, if the, if that whole market value exclusion comes forward with a change in this legislative session, it will create a very difficult comparability factor. And thank you, I appreciate your effort on this.
Thank you, Julie, and I just want to say that I'm extremely proud of this budget that we've put together. I think it puts necessary investments that we need for the future of Shakopee in the forefront and gets a lot of really good things done for our city. So, I'm, in contrast to Council Lamon, I'm very happy and proud of what we've done for the future of Shakopee, so. Item number seven, business removal consent agenda, there were none. Item number ten F-one.
I want to take a ten-minute break, this might be a good time.
We need to? Okay. All right, Council Lamon.
Motion for a ten-minute recess.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it if it's a water break and not a breakwater, right?
Yeah, there's-
Second, Council Whiting, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Sorry, passes four to one. We're in recess for ten minutes.
Aren't you supposed to be like in labor or something?
Yeah.
Give me a second.
There you go.
Don't worry, I'm ready.
Don't worry, I'm ready.
I don't know about long, but certainly twenty to thirty minutes, you know, it's not five minutes' agenda.
The time the EAC met, we had staff teams to plan the next agenda and also work on some of the administrative items. So, we're gonna jump right into the details of a little bit on your existing system so that we have a basis for comparison. And then Tracy's also gonna cover the highlights of the recommendations that are coming out of your Environmental Advisory Committee, but we encourage you to ask questions as we go on through this presentation. So, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. It's always a pleasure to be back here in the council chambers. As Dan mentioned, we've had a number of meetings, both with staff and with the Environmental Advisory Commission, and I'm sure all of you are aware, since you receive the service, that there's a refuse and recycling contract with Dick's and it expires in a little less than two years, on May 31st of 2014. And right now, it is a weekly residential refuse and dual stream, so that's where you're still having to sort your plastics and glass and paper from one another that is picked up curbside, and that is offered for all residents throughout the community. In addition, there's also a yard waste service that's offered seasonally, either by a container that you can pay roughly fifty-four dollars or per bag that you can use as needed. There's also a weekly bulk pickup, everything from mattresses to stoves, all those things, everything from, you know, about four dollars to up to about seventy-five. So, in a nutshell, that's kinda what the basics and the nutshells of your current contract are. What we did is we reviewed at a little bit more detail with the EAC, the current contract, and then we also moved to a lot of other additional items. Since the last contract was done over a decade ago, there've been a lot of new changes in technology, in recycling, what haulers are able to collect, and what the facilities are able to process. When the contract was done ten years ago, you know, it was very cutting-edge at the time, Shockley was right at the top of things. However, there are a lot of new things now. So, what we came back from the EAC is the biggest thing from them is that they wanted to keep the RFP simple. They didn't want five thousand options for every area that we're gonna talk about, and that's why we're coming back with some recommendations for you. They also really wanted to encourage competition. We had a great showing. We had roughly six different haulers at every meeting that we had, and they also had an opportunity at the end of each meeting to speak at an open mic. So, we got, we gathered a lot of really great information from the haulers as well, from local companies out of Jordan, all the way to the nationals as well. One of the big things that the EAC also decided is that price was important, but it wasn't the only factor. They wanted to see other environmental concerns, they wanted to see other processes that would be allowed as well. One of those things that they thought that was important besides the price was to have a single-stream recycling as a preferred method unlike your current dual stream. Instead of having a separate contain, or excuse me, instead of having to separate your items in a container, you'd get a larger container similar to, you can see these containers here for recycling, and you would just be able to put everything into one container. Not only would it be a lot easier, you'll also be able to recycle a lot more materials. Currently, the contract calls for only some of the plastics and other things that you can't take like juice boxes, orange juice box containers, things like that, whereas with the single sort, you would be able to collect a lot more. It would be on in every other week, so it'd be twenty-six times a year, which also would reduce the truck traffic on Shockley Street, so wear and tear on your roads as well. But the container's large enough that it could hold everything, and the great thing is that the footprint is the same, the size on the bottom is roughly the same as an individual recycling container. Obviously, it's a little bit higher, but the footprint is, is the same. Additionally, we're looking at having for the carts, for refuse and recycling, so this does not apply to organics that we'll talk about in just a minute or our yard waste service. So, when I'm talking about all these numbers, you have about eleven thousand households, and we're looking at either where the hauler purchases the carts and the containers for the refuse and recycling, or looking at having the city have the option as well. So, the city would buy those. And just so you all know, and so Bruce and his staff don't get too worried, we'd wanna make sure that the hauler would still be responsible for maintaining and distributing all of those. That's something that your staff, although is very good, does not have the time to be dealing with those types of issues, so when the pricing would occur, it would be on that. The EAC and the haulers, 'cause we did, as I said, receive a lot of great comment from the haulers as well, were split on if they thought that the city should own the carts or if the hauler should own the carts. And to put that in perspective for you, for about eleven thousand households at two carts each, so one for refuse and one for recycling, it'd be about a million dollars, give or take, in that area. That's something that the city could look at amortizing over roughly a ten-year period instead of the current five-year contract period. And the reason that you're able to do that is because all of these carts have a ten-year warranty. The lifespan of them is probably closer to fifteen years. So, in five years, when your contract is up, all the haulers are gonna propose a price of their carts, 'cause they, they are not sure in five years will their contract be up or not. They'll propose the price of the carts within five years. Whereas if the city purchased them and had the ownership of those carts, you could amortize those with you bond, pay cash, whatever it may be. You could spread that lifespan over a ten-year period, and then at the end of that period, whether it's five or ten years that the city chose to spread the cost over, you would then have an asset. So, then it makes it much easier for transition if after five years, you either wanna select a different hauler, or when you're negotiating with even the same hauler, you would have a little bit more leverage in price, because then you would remove the cart pricing, you would just be focusing on the service issue at that point. In addition to the benefit of the city having an asset, it also levels the playing field. Right now, as I mentioned before, you have both smaller haulers and larger haulers that are interested in this contract right now. However, by the city owning the carts, you remove the bulk quantities of some of the larger haulers, you could call it the Costco purchasing, and put it a little bit more in a better playing field, so hopefully you would get more competitive prices. You could also add in branding and city logos with that as well, so you could have a little bit more of advertising of your cities. You could say, "These are the things that we want put on our containers," since you would have ownership of them. Now, with that said, there's obviously pros and cons with the city owning them or the hauler owning them. So, what the EAC has recommended to you is that you include both in the RFP, the hauler option, where the hauler would propose that they would own the carts and there would be a price for that, and then also an option for the city to own the carts. What we're asking for your feedback tonight is, you know, if you do have a preference of one over the other, but take in mind that if you do ask for both options, then when the RFPs come back, you really get the best of both worlds, because we'll be, Dan and I will be able to present the information back to you to say, "Here are the costs if the city owns it, and here are the costs if the hauler owns it." So, you really kinda get a lot more information that way, and that wouldn't be too burdensome, I think, on the haulers to offer that as well. In addition to cart ownership, the EAC definitely felt that yard waste should continue as a subscription-only service. They didn't think it should be mandated throughout the community, so people could sign up, whether it be a container and/or a bag. In addition to yard waste, another optional subscription service that the EAC felt was important to offer as part of the contracts was an organic waste, so that's kinda food waste collection service that would be in the RFP. This would not be something that would be mandated and/or citywide. This would be something that a resident could choose and say, "I would like to sign up for this," and they would pay the price. It wouldn't be subsidized by the residents who were not, um, um, excuse me, selecting that service at that time. One thing that we thought also with the organics program is since it is so new, it's not only just new to Shockley, and this is why it's not in your current contract, it's also pretty new to the industry. It's changing a lot. There's a lot of different ways to do it. Either you can just have a yard waste container by itself, it can be commingled with yard waste as well, but the industry is changing quite a bit, and if you were to move forward with some of the other new changes, like this single-sort recycling and some of the other things that we're proposing this evening, the EAC and even the haulers felt that it might be nice to phase this in. So, if your new contract started June 1st of 2014, it might be a nice addition to have the organics not start till sometime in spring of 2015 to allow some, you know, the residents to get used to some of these new things. Additionally, and this is off of a subscription or service that we've been talking about before, but the EAC felt that the RFP should encourage differential rate schedules for thirty, sixty, and ninety-gallon containers, but not specify a pay-as-you-throw increments. So, basically, what pay-as-you-throw increments means is that you would have a different percentage or the city would, in the RFP, specify different percentages based on thirty, sixty, ninety-gallon containers. So, you, it would be trying to get people to encourage you to use a thirty or sixty-gallon container, so you would pay more proportionally for a ninety-gallon container than you would for a sixty, or, excuse me, for a thirty or sixty gallon. So, basically, the more you throw away, the more you save, and the haulers really felt, instead of the city dictating what kind of prices or formulas that the hauler should do, they really felt that they should be the experts, and they wanted to allow the haulers to propose something innovative and let that kinda stay in their hands. Additionally, the city does have some public educational tools right now, but they, the EAC wanted to make sure that there was an annual calendar that showed everything from, you know, seasonal pickups to, you know, the Fourth of July calendar, a quarterly newsletter that was written and/or electronic, and instruction cart tickets and hang tags for the recycling carts, kinda those little reminders that if you're not recycling the proper thing, they leave you a little reminder. They also felt that the RFP should encourage but not require other hauler-provided tools, a webpage specific to Shockley or other electronic social media tools. We didn't wanna get too bogged down in saying you should do Twitter or a blog or an e-blast, because in five years from now, who knows what that social media will be, and we're really hoping that the haulers will provide some innovative ways of getting communication out. And additionally, we're looking at doing some recycling awards to the residents as well. You know, if you are caught recycling, you could get a free month of service, some things like that. But we really want the haulers to put their best foot forward and let them shine and have some innovative things in there as well. Additionally, and we talked a little bit about this with the single sort, is we're hoping to expand the types of recyclable materials that Shockley residents can do right now. So, in addition to the, right now, you can do plastics one and two, those are kinda your basic bottles with a neck, is kinda what you can think of in milk gallons. They pretty much, you'd be able to recycle almost all plastics. You'd also be able to do different kinds of cartons, juice boxes, box boards, cereal, pasta, so it would really make it a lot easier for people to recycle more. That would also help with your recycling revenue rebate that you have currently right now as well. The RFP would also accept but not require things like textiles or clothing or scrap metal. Different haulers have different viewpoints on what the markets are for those or if they wanna take them or not, so we're interested to see what they would wanna say in their RFP on those types of things. And I'll pause for just a second to see if you have any questions. I went through a very long list quickly here on some of those things. We're trying to keep it at a high level for you tonight, so we're not bogging down with everything before we move on to administrative issues.
Councilman Lehman.
The, uh, the RFP should encourage differential rate schedules for thirty, sixty, and ninety-gallon collection service. Can you explain that a little more in detail to me?
So, Councilor Lehman, what happens with a pay-as-you-throw system with the differential rates? Some communities have chosen to pretty much, you have a higher rate that you pay. So, say right now, you know, we'll just have easy numbers, that you pay five dollars for a thirty-gallon, you pay ten dollars for a sixteen, fifteen for a ninety-gallon. What would happen is you would take a percentage, and you would say, "We think that the ninety-gallon should be seventy percent more than what the thirty-gallon would be on the, on the payment." So, what would happen is, it would almost be like a subsidy, so the thirty-gallon rate would be, it would be proportionally cheaper than what the ninety-gallon rate would be to encourage people to recycle and go to the thirty and sixty-gallon containers. What the hauler said is, "We're the best at having the rates. We know what works in the market. Don't tell us, you know, where we should set our, you know, let it be laissez-faire, let the market show what that is." The EAC was split. Some people said, "Well, it might be nice to encourage more recycling or other means of getting rid of refuse and, and really kind of reward people for having a thirty-gallon container, so instead of paying five dollars, what the normal rate would be, you might pay, say, three fifty, and instead of paying fifteen for the ninety-gallon, you might pay seventeen." So, people with a larger container would be subsidizing those with a smaller container in order to encourage recycling and other methods, so you're not filling up landfills.
But, and my thought on this is, you've got a single old lady living by herself who has a small can that really only needs to be serviced bi-weekly, which is a separate issue I'll get into, compared to seven people living in a household next door with three babies or something that needs a larger can, and now the larger family is subsidizing, and I guess I disagree with that.
Well, that's why we said in here that we weren't gonna have that included, that we would have, what the haulers proposed, that's why we said, you know, if they wanted to do that, we would allow it to happen, exactly for what you're saying, is that we would, if, we would incur, if they wanna propose it, they can, but as a city, we were not gonna propose that in the RFP. If they came back with it, that would be okay, and obviously be your job to evaluate if that's what you wanted with, in front of you.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
Does, uh, does the, you know, currently, the recycling goes in separate containers?
Correct.
Or, separate bags in the same container. Would the RFP allow for either-or?
We could allow for either-or. The dual sort could still be an option. When we heard from the haulers, there were six haulers at each of the EAC meetings, and all of them said that pretty much single sort is the wave of the future in all their contracts, that's what they're moving to, 'cause that's what people want. It's easy, they can recycle more, that's what, you know, kinda the standard is right now, but we wouldn't, you know, if someone proposed a dual stream, we would also evaluate that as well.
Okay. And then does the, um, the one where everything goes in one can of recyclables?
Yep.
Does, does that allow for all these other added things from the, the cardboard boxes of different types and stuff compared to now what's not allowed?
Yep.
Do they, do you RFP that separately as just number-one plastics and number-two plastics, or all of the above?
Well, we, as, uh, from the feedback from the EAC, they wanted plastics one through seven, so basically all plastics and glass, and then all those board boxes and then the cartons could all go in there, and if the haulers wanted to propose other things, you know, like the scrap metal or the textiles, they could propose those as well, but at a minimum, we wanted to make it easy for residents, so they're not saying which plastic bottle, just put it all in there.
Okay, but currently, a lot of them things aren't allowed?
Correct.
So, did we ask all these possible haulers what they, just industry-wide is accepted? 'Cause I, I don't wanna put an RFP out that requires the haulers to accept things that aren't normally accepted, placing a higher burden on those that are gonna pay for the service.
No, that's actually a really great question, and actually, all six of the haulers did come to the mic and speak to that, and that's why we had put these scrap metal and textiles as an option and not a mandated item. They said that all those other items they are currently accepting in the recycling facilities are able to take them, so that's a great question.
All right. Councilwoman Whiting.
Well, you kinda hit on one of the questions I had on, is the cost more, and I think your idea with the thirty, sixty, ninety plan was more to encourage recycling, so...
Correct.
The cost isn't in the quantity of garbage, or, my question, is the cost in the quantity of garbage or the actual pickup?
It's the size of the container. The trucks don't really have the ability right now to measure, you know, if you have one bag or two bags in there, and so it's, it would be based solely on the size of the container.
So, the values and encouraging the recycling?
Correct.
Okay. And then, is there any percentages or studies done to show that the single-sort system, which evidently is where everybody's going, is that encouraging more recycling?
It, it is encouraging more recycling. I think the easiest way to say it is all the EAC members said, you know, "Keep it simple." And actually, one of the EAC members who's in the non-sewered area of Shockley, so he's currently not in the contract area, is one of the seven hundred and fifty residents who falls outside of that. He actually said, you know, he just recently went to it, he goes, "It's so much easier, I can just fill up my container all the time," and I think that that was, you know, a, a good, you know, you know, little proposal for the haulers and for the single sort, that it's, it is. It's easy, and that's what residents want. And actually, David Domack from your current hauler, Dick's Sanitation, also spoke and said, "The biggest request that they get from all residents on the refuse contract right now is to have single sort, because it's just so much easier for residents to be able to throw everything in one bin, and it also will help keep your city cleaner too, 'cause everything will be contained with the lid, and I know that there are some problems where things will be flying down the street, you know, paper on a windy day and things like that, so that, it'll help with those items as well."
Mr. Mayor, I'll follow up, just with a comment. I like having the option with the cart ownership in there, so I'm glad you have that. We can take a look at that and make the judgment on our own, and I thought that you and the EAC put a lot of time and energy, and I wanna thank you guys for all you did on that.
Thank you. They've, they've been great to work with. They've been a wonderful group.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Lehman?
The, uh, and I might be getting ahead of where you're at, but there has a list of the staff, team, and consults that have identified another, a number of other issues. Snowbird policy for residents that leave for extended periods.
I think we're getting to that, right?
Yes, we are. I was gonna pause and turn...
Should I wait then?
And turn everything over to Dan here.
All right, I'll wait.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
We won't go too far. All right. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, let's take a quick look at the next two slides here. We purposely selected the higher-level policy issues to bring in front of the EAC, but we also have a series of really important, but I think more technical or administrative issues. And so, these don't have the benefit of an EAC recommendation per se, but we know we've gotta work on it and work on the language for this. Snowbird policy, what's the minimum amount of time away from your home before you can request a waiver of the cost of the, or the price for the trash, and what's the maximum amount of time? We're gonna take a close look at that and come up with some language in the RFP. And, and all of this, by the way, I'll summarize by saying you'll have a chance to see those details in January, when we come back to you with the full draft. All of these issues are fairly standard provisions in both contracts and, of course, then in the RFP itself, so that the haulers all know before they even begin what, what the specifications are. So, recycling in the parks, and really, it should say in other city facilities as well. Right now, there is some service provided by your existing contractor, and that would continue. It's just specifying the buildings, the frequency of service, and also adding for recycling in the parks, which isn't being done currently, trash service, yes, but not the recycling, as I understand it. So, um, spring road restrictions are a current issue in the, in the contract and would continue and would need to be specified, both referencing the state road restriction as well as city policy on, on spring road restrictions. Brush pickup, it's, it's actually a point that the county has brought up, and they would like to see more alternative service, whether it be curbside or drop-off, and so we're taking a look at that and, and trying to evaluate city staff costs as well as what it might mean for, for residents' service. The valet or what we normally call walk-in service is currently provided and would continue. What we'd like to see in the RFP is the haulers coming back with proposed prices for these additional services, so that it's not just specified, but we actually get to see what the costs are, and that would become the basis for a contract if awarded. Continuing on to the next round of issues here, the service would be citywide, but only for the current contract area, the geographic area, but for those outside that area, there would be an opt-in provision, a voluntary opt-in. It wouldn't be required, but if a resident who, who doesn't have city sewer service wanted to use the trash recycling, trash and recycling contract, they could opt in. Yes.
Oh, Councilman Lehman?
If sewer was extended to a non-sewered area during the term of the new contract, would that resident then be, be brought into the system?
We, we've had one situation like that in the...
Beckridge area.
Beckridge Park area. So, we did have about thirty homes that were previously in the unorganized area, and those were brought in.
Okay, but that area requested the service, the sewer service, the, uh, what do you call that?
Petitioned.
Petitioned the city for that. If the city, if they, if it wasn't a petition, would it still work the same way?
First question would be is, are you going to be bringing sewer to an area that's not petitioning for it?
Potentially.
The garbage part of it might be a minor consideration on that, but I think that's something you'd need to take a look at.
Okay.
Mayor?
Bruce has got to say it.
I think, I think the provisions in our contract we have is talked about, when we extend municipal urban service area, we extend that boundary, then I think there's a requirement that they have to come in. So, that's what we've done. I mean, as, as with development occurs.
Right.
When we do new developments, Valley Creek Crossing, Second, that'll, that'll be in the contract area.
All right.
Very good. Continue.
The next item mentions revenue sharing, recycling revenue sharing, and that's currently provided, but it's, it's really a recommended provision for any recycling contract or refuse and recycling contract, as this one is bundled, so that the city and the residents can enjoy the, the value, at least a share of the value. Now, there's some risk with that, but the, in general, it's, it's a imbalance with the ups and downs of the market, it's a favorable position to, to have some revenue sharing. It actually helps risk sharing to some extent with protections for the city and the residents. Fuel escalator cost should be specified. Electronic billing should be encouraged, but probably not required, is the way I would say it. Liquidated damages are standard provisions to assure that there are very clear standards for service, both on the route and customer service in the office, in terms of telephone response time, and if those kinds of standards are not met, that there would actually be liquidated damages imposed. We don't call them penalties, but you can think of them that way, if you will. The attorneys probably wouldn't want me to say that, but that's how they function, really. Handling past due accounts is really an important issue that we've, we've spent some time on already. We don't have the language actually drafted, but the, the point is, is that the contractor is gonna do the billing as it is currently. That's the scenario that we're bringing forward, is it would stay the same. Well, there are times when the hauler cannot collect the payments, and so there needs to be a very clear procedure for how and when the city would get involved, how the hauler would first make his or her good faith effort to collect from their customer, document those efforts, and then if after a period of notifications, there still isn't payment, you can't withhold trash service by state law, so now the hauler is stuck with providing a service without the payment. So, then that could be turned over to the city for an assessment. I think it's similar to the way the system works today, but we just need to make sure it's very clear, specified, and that there's a relationship between the hauler and what role the city has to take on, and how those assessments would, would occur.
Councilman Lehman?
Is it possible to have rental properties be billed both to the rental unit and also the property owner?
Mr. Mayor? One of the things that we've encouraged almost annually, when you have the meeting in October, and these are set, is to have the amount of the garbage bill factored into the rent, and that way...
Right.
It could go then to the one who's actually generating. It does create some problems when they have large bulky items that are not part of the normal billing, but I think that would be the preferred way of doing it. As you've heard, however, there are landlords who prefer to have the billing that goes to them, and that creates some of the issues, but those are some of the things that we're continuing to research, and I think before the RFP goes out, we will need to have some language that everyone's comfortable with as we proceed forward.
If there's no further questions on the administrative issues, I'd like to talk about what, to me, is one of the more important things, and one of the reasons we, we are glad to be in front of you at this early stage in this process, and that's the proposal evaluation criteria. The, first of all, this is a proposal process, it's not a low-bid process, but I think the EAC really echoed and, and stated that clearly, and it's the way it was done in previous rounds, that there was actually a proposal process where cost is very, very important, but it's not the only consideration. And so, price is a clear criteria, but the others that the EAC helped us develop include experience and capacity, that essentially, the eligible haulers would need to show that they are providing similar service to similar-level cities in other parts of the metro, references from existing customers and con, and contracts that they have, thoroughness and responsiveness to the RFP. There is a lot of innovation that's gonna be allowed, some minimum requirements. If they take exceptions to the minimums, which would still make them eligible, we'd take a look at that, but also, what innovations are they bringing forward? What, what creative concepts are they... What creative concepts are they proposing to increase recycling? And then finally, overall environmental benefits. We discussed this at some length at the last EAC meeting just last week here in this room. And there was agreement that there should be consideration of what alternative fuels are they proposing to use? What's their routing? What's their overall environmental ethic and philosophy that they put into the proposal? We'd like to see into the future, it's going to be more and more common for environmental considerations to be a standard part of review of proposals like this, similar to safety plans, if you will. They're required by state and federal regulations, but in this case by policy to have some statement of what their environmental ethic and philosophy is. Especially for the EAC, this was an important point. And while it will need to be further defined in the RFP with specific language so that it can actually be measured so that it's not just an esoteric essay on philosophy, but rather what's, how is one operation different from another operation? And that will be challenging, but it's doable and other cities use it that way. So in balance, there would be very clear criteria framed like this. And we're seeking your direction on if there's any further feedback or policy direction that we can get. But otherwise, you would be seeing these criteria come back to you in January in the draft RFP with a procedure to go with it. So maybe I pause here for a second and then I'll wrap up with my last slide for any further questions.
Coach Lamon?
Two questions, Mayor. First, on the environmental benefits. I don't want to get ourselves in a position of pitting new clean biodiesel trucks against other alternative energy trucks because now we're battling against two new forms of clean energy and trying to pick the winners and the losers. So I kind of, a little cautious about where you're going with that one. The other option for the snowbird policy, you gotta, I know you gotta figure out the short window and the long window, but is there any consideration to go into a bi-weekly service instead? If you can't make that window, the reason I bring that up is because I know a lot of single seniors that live in houses that don't have but one small bag of trash a week. And even at the small container, they never use it. So there they're getting billed every week when they could be on a bi-weekly pickup. And it wouldn't be an extra truck through the road because they just would be picking up the two beside of them. And every other week, they would get picked up. Actually, they're the ones that need the break on the monthly billing and they're not using the service, but they're required to have it. Something I would have staff and you folks maybe look into a little more and see if it's feasible or not.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and Councilman Lamon, I agree that the every other week option for residents, if they're at the thirty gallon level already, they're at the lowest size.
Right.
To go to every other week, essentially cutting their service level in half still is done by other cities. And it's becoming more common and it is being looked at as a way to actually further encourage recycling and the organics piece. And so, yes, I think it's something that should be encouraged for the proposers to come forward with for that service. I don't think it addresses adequately the snowbird issue.
Okay.
I think it's a separate issue that should be specified, at least in terms of how it'd be encouraged in the RFP. But the snowbird issue, I think is going to have to be a policy statement that's much more specific. So that everybody is, if it's a three-week minimum, four-week minimum, that everybody's proposing on the same thing unless they take exception. So one of the tidbits that we're looking for are how many snowbird customers there are in the city today. We know there are a number of them, but we don't know exactly what that number is. And so that'll help us further refine that issue.
Any other comments? Is there anything specific you need from us on this or?
Well, let me just wrap up by covering the schedule and process from this point forward. Right now, the plan that I understand from the staff team is to come back to you in mid to late January with a full draft of the RFP itself. Tonight, we're bringing concepts, we're bringing the recommendations at a high level from the EAC. But the RFP itself would then be, you know, it's going to be fairly thick document, so you may want some time to review it. But then we'd stand for your questions and further discussion on the details of the writing. February twentieth is the target date for release. Given that there's plenty of adequate notice with the EAC process and also that there'll be a pre-proposal meeting sometime after the twentieth, we feel that four weeks is adequate lead time for the haulers to respond back with proposals. So right now, March twentieth proposals would be due. A staff team would be formed to, maybe the same as the current staff team that's directing our work. But in any case, a specific staff team would be formed to review proposals. And it's a lot of work because we're expecting very competitive proposals. So it takes a lot of time to read each of these and go through them in a confidential way and review those. And come back to City Council roughly in May for a report of that staff team with actually topped ranked proposers. The only thing that becomes public on March twentieth in a proposal process per the state law would be the names of the proposers, not the prices, not the contents. That would be held as confidential until the actual contract would be executed. One other procedure that we think is very, very helpful is restricted communications between the release of the RFP on February twentieth until a contract's executed. And that just helps with all the parties involved so that through the city administrator, if there's questions or if there's information that needs to go back out, likely after, for instance, the pre-proposal conference, there'll be answers to questions that came up. Those will all go through the city administrator and then back to proposers that are interested. And so it just helps with the process that if everybody knows what the rules of the game are, that it be fair and transparent. And it's part of the reason we want to see those evaluation criteria nailed down and not changed at a later date. Because it kind of sets the rules of the game. Yes, Mr. Mayor and member?
Coach Lamon?
So the City Council doesn't have any input into this process?
Not at all. No, that's why we're here tonight at an early stage. That's why we're coming back with a final draft of the RFP. There is plenty of time for citizens, interested parties, haulers, potential proposers to address you at any point up through the February twentieth. But the staff team would be assigned with the challenging task of reviewing the technical aspects per the RFP and then coming back to City Council with a recommendation and a report on the details of, in general form, of what the best fit proposals were for the city, given the criteria that you established in the RFP. So I think I understand your question, but did I answer it well enough?
Uh, no, you'd have, I'd like to see, I'd like to see probably the top three proposals and have them broke down into Lamon's terms so I can understand them without all the technical
You are a funny guy.
Stuff. And read them for myself to see which one I think personally would be the best for the citizens I represent.
Coach Clay?
I think his point was not so much that we're not going to be fully informed and, you know, through this whole process. I think your point was is we don't want different haulers contacting individual council members with questions or comments or whatever to do a little pre-schmoozing before we make a decision. The contact should, if they have any questions or comments, should go to administration and then to us.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that portion of it, but I don't, I do have a problem with at the eleventh hour having a proposal put in front of me saying, here's what we're recommending and we're not going to let you see anything else. Because I, that's disingenuous in my eyes. I'd like to see the top three put in a basic report form ahead of time so that I can evaluate it. And if I have to, if that's confidential information, that's fine. I'm okay with that. I mean, I've been here long enough to know that what's confidential is confidential and my record is pretty clear on that. So, but that's the process I expect.
We'll see what we can do. We understand your concern.
But with, I would, my preference of it would be to have the criteria laid out beforehand and whichever meets that criteria best, that's the one that gets it and not have to choose between three different haulers. Because I don't have a way to choose between three different haulers. I mean, I don't have
Mr. Mayor? I think the concern, what Dan is trying to say is that there are going to be a number of different proposals. And they are not going to be exact apples-to-apples comparisons. One might have a better price, but another one might have a superior way of collecting organics. You know, the committee is going to go through and is going to analyze those. And as a result of criteria that we're going to identify early on, we'll come up with a recommendation. That's what we'd be making as a recommendation to you as the council, whether you choose to accept that or not is up to you. But I think it is very important to make sure that if there are haulers that have questions or issues or things like that, that that not come to you as individual members. You know, we don't expect an engineering contract to contact you individually if they've got issues or something that they see they need to go through staff on that. We want to make sure that you're fully informed on it, but we want to make certain that there's a process that everyone's comfortable with.
Yep, I totally agree with that. However, it's also equally important that our staff is not placed in a position to have somebody later say that you were biased in a process. We haven't seen all the data to support your recommendation, therefore how do we know that you are not being biased? So I think that's a poor position for staff to be put in.
Got it.
I do understand your concern and I, there are alternative processes that I'd like a chance to talk with staff before we come back to you with the specific details on how to maintain the confidentiality, how to maintain the city's best interests when it comes to actually negotiations in a controlled manner. What we have seen on occasion is negotiations occurring in an open forum, dealing with price, steering with specific specifications or service standards. And I don't think that's good for any of the parties involved, whether it be the city or the haulers. It's, you don't want to pick based on who's got the best lobbyists. You want to get the best value for your citizens. And I think we can find a means to maintain the confidentiality of the information and still keep the city's leverage where it needs to be on negotiations. We'll have to get back to you with specifics. We may need some further legal advice to make sure that we're not going out of bounds on that.
Good. Any other questions or discussion? Is there anything other specifically you'd like from us this evening or?
No, this is great. If there are additional questions, I'm sure the staff will let us know. But we'll be back to you in January with a lot more detail at that time. So appreciate your time and again, thanks for the opportunity to serve your city here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number ten F two, goal-setting process. Mr. McNeil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you'll recall, earlier this year, the City Council and department heads spent a couple of evenings in March doing a facilitated goal-setting session. At that time, we identified twelve, one to two-year, excuse me, two to five-year priorities. However, those didn't turn out to be what you wanted and as such, right now, we don't have identified city goals. Mayor Tapke has indicated they'd like to revisit that. However, instead of having the City Council and staff reach consensus, what he's proposing is that each department establish a series of goals. A short-term set, three for two thousand thirteen, three for two to three years, and then three that would be longer-term goals beyond five years. Each of those would have tasks, goal dates, and then responsible and accountable parties that are responsible for each of those being done. However, he'd also like to include having the city's advisory boards and commissions do the same sort of goal-setting session. We talked about this at a staff level. And Bruce Lowney noted that the city of Prior Lake this year did something that related very closely to that for their advisory boards and commissions. There, the city council on each of their eight advisory boards got together in a single workshop that allowed each board to present what their particular group had done that year as a summary and then set goals that they wanted to see in the upcoming year. This is an example of one of their committees. This is the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee. They looked at, in this case, working with the police department, working with Highway thirteen walking trail, adding some other students or students, members, those sorts of things. Their goals for that particular committee were three and they talked about those things that you see there. So that is a, an opportunity they felt for information sharing between each of the boards and commissions and the city council, what they found that in some cases, they were duplicating efforts. And in other cases, there were ways that each of them could work better together. In the end, they worked to tie that to the city's twenty thirty vision and strategic plan. Finally, they did this over a meal and that gave that city an opportunity to recognize their volunteer boards and commissions, something that's different than the way that we do it here. We'd like to ask if this is something that you would like to do for the city of Shakopee. We do have a number, actually ten, boards and commissions. I think the top six there might be set up or might be suited to establish goals. The bottom ones are more regulatory in nature and respond to specific instances. As stated earlier, we also talked about including departments. If you want to do that, we could certainly go ahead. The one thing I guess I would caution is that with the departments, the ones that we have here, if you add a total of nine goals for each of them, that could be seventy-two goals and objectives. You add the sixth, the total of fifty-four. If you were to do this in one evening, that would be over a hundred and thirty goals and objectives to review. That might be a bit much. So we should probably talk about if this is something that you want to do and when. Quite frankly, I guess first question is, is this a format that you would like to see done? As opposed to the consensus that we've had between department heads and city council?
Council Lamon? Mayor, I believe this body and everybody on it is elected to lead this community. We had a goal-setting session two nights in March. City council and all our staff members came up with our goals and objectives. Why we didn't adopt them, I don't know, but they should be adopted. Our goals and objectives should then be given to the boards and commissions so they know where our goals and objectives are. And if they have separate goals underneath our goals and objectives, they're more than happy to share them with us and we can give them the nod if we want them to pursue that or not. Not too many years ago, the planning commission and city council were at odds because they didn't know where each other was going. And then recently, the park board and the city council were at odds on procedural ways of developing parks. And the reason that happens is because the leadership at the top, which is this body, isn't clear to those that we appoint to serve us. So I think it's important that this body sets goals and objectives for all of our boards and commissions, recognizing if they have something that falls within that, that they can share that with us. And if we want them to pursue that, we'll give them a nod and they can pursue that. That's my opinion.
I agree with everything you just said. I agree with everything you just said, that we are, uh, the, the leaders and the creators of the clarity, I suppose, um, that needs to happen and our goals, we did adopt our, our top goals and those from our work session. So that was adopted, we took those. So those were very much adopted, but from that, um, we did not adopt the individual, um, department goals that were brought to us subsequently from there. My reasoning for not wanting to adopt them is that they were, uh, they lacked the clarity that you just talked about. I don't even remember getting those or not, but they didn't have, they weren't actionable goals. It was, um, some of them, a lot of them were, um, nebulous and didn't have, didn't say, this is what we're going to do, this is by, when we're going to do it by and have actionable concrete goals that everyone on staff, everyone in the community can judge us by if we're meeting those goals. And so what I would like to do is bring goals from the departments and the, um, advisory boards and commissions to us. We will say, yes, this is something that we want to do, no, it's not something we want to do. That way, it gives staff and those boards clarity, exactly like you talked about, of exactly what they're supposed to be doing and, um, shows, and we can show to the public that within the Historic Preservation Advisory Commission, for example, um, that board, there are, of our goals that we adopted and we talked about in our goal-setting evening, there's nothing for that committee within our, within our goals currently. And so if they bring things forward that they want to get accomplished, which we're never going to be able to go through and create short and long-term goals for a, a board like that, we just don't have the time or the ability or the knowledge to do those kinds of things. So if it comes from them, we say, yes, this is something that we think needs to have happen, no, it's not something, try again. We can have a, a living, breathing document of this is what we're working on as a city and this is what we are doing so that if a department head has a choice be, with time constraints between doing A or B, and A is a goal of what we're doing, B is not, we can toss that aside and not have to worry about that at that time so that we, um, are improving our efficiency and letting department heads and boards focus on what the city's concrete goals are. So I agree with everything that you just said, I just agree from a different angle. Council Whiting?
You know, we, we did do some goal-setting and I do recall the, the department head goals and they weren't, you know, measurable and they didn't have timeframes and, and so they, and there, there wasn't a lot of value back to us that we're showing. Now, as far as, so I, I can see the need there, but as far as the advisory commissions, I think that's very important that we work with them and, and present our goals to them or at least have them present it through the department heads and have them bring back some goals that we can look at. And that could be at a, at a workshop session, maybe two to three advisory groups come and present to us maybe at different times and we work with them so that they have some clear direction. We have these great advisory groups that are volunteer and working for us and they're like ships out on the sea and we need to provide that rudder for them to, they may have some great ideas and they may be going with us or against us and we need to provide that leadership. So I, I see the value in putting something together.
Just for clarification, those were not department head goals that were brought back, that was staff's response to the 12 goals and objectives that were jointly set.
Thank you. Council Sherman?
That's where I think that then prior, priority-wise, um, I like the idea of having the department take that information and establish the three shorter-term goals and the recommended kind of intermediate goals and longer-term goals, that that seems like the first step would be from a department perspective and then from a timing, maybe layering in the boards and commissions after that's been established, so.
Okay. Council Clay?
If the department heads didn't come back with specific enough things from our goal-setting last March, it was because they weren't sure where the money was going to come from to do it. We've kind of answered a bit of that question by passing their levy tonight, but, you know, my last comment over the different terms I've had on this board, how many of these goal-setting things I've sat through, but I, I can't tell you that you can do something else, you, what you're sug, what you're suggesting or what Mr. McNeil is suggesting, but you're basically going to end up with the same product that we ended up with this March, which is the same product we ended up with a couple of years before that and the same project we ended up with a few years before that. You know, we're all pretty much know what we want to do and where we want to go and what the general goals are, it's just, are we going to fund it or not? And you can have all the goal-setting meetings and redo the things you already did, you want, but it's not going to change the end result.
I guess I'm not asking-
I guess I'm saying, I agree with everything Matt said without any qualifications.
Okay, I-
Look at that, unanimous.
Yeah.
Now what is it I said?
Um-
Exactly.
All right, I guess I don't know exactly how to respond to that, other than there, there is not, um-
Take, have staff, direct staff to take what we did in, in March and run with it.
We did that once.
Well, if, if you think we need to do it again, we'll do it again, but-
Well, we as a body decided that it needed to be done again.
Well, let's rethink that and just go back to what our, we first did and-
I, I think that we need to have concrete goals for people. I, I don't think that happy, healthy community is a, is an actionable goal. I, I don't think that has, it's a ma, it's a, uh, a way for everyone to not meet expectations or fail. But if we have that, a, a goal of with economic development, for example, to identify, um, areas for additional retail or rezoning or, or what needs to be done for redevelopment or, or actionable goals like that, let the, my thought is let the Economic Development Advisory Committee, um, along with staff, come up with those actionable goals that we can, that we can say, we're working toward this by 2016.
That's what staff's going to do anyway, without us having to tell them to do that. I, I think what I'm trying to say here is that what we accomplished in March is fine and if we try to do anything else, we're just micromanaging.
Yeah.
And let's, you know, let's not do that.
Okay.
Let's staff do their jobs and try to stay out of their way as best we can and, you know, supply that rudder as generally necessary to keep us on a particular course, but not go back and say, okay, staff, I want you to do A, B, C, D, and E and E subj, you know, subsection one and two, but skip three and go to four. Nah, that's, that's not our job, that's staff's job. Let's let staff do their work.
The other problem with having the boards come forward with plans, we're, we're actually creating a, call it a hardship, but we're making staff's job harder because now they're going to go to the boards, have them do some brainstorming sessions, spend a bunch of time doing that, working on that information to see if it's feasible at the, at the advisory level, go back to the advisory level, say, oh, this one's really not feasible and put a bunch of staff time into research and all this stuff and, and come up with a game plan to bring to council, come to council and we're going to say, eh, nope, go back, try again. It's just, it's just not productive. The, the more productive and efficient way is for us to have a set of goals that staff was part of in our goal-setting session, so when staff, which we have, staff goes to our, our advisory board meetings and when this advisory board starts going off in left field, not saying they do that, but if they did, staff would rein them back in and say, well, the council made it pretty clear at their goal-setting session that they were going this way, so you might want to steer that way. That's the kind of the way I see it.
So what do we have in our, because we didn't set goals, we set priorities.
Well-
The, the, the multiple priorities that we set at that, that night.
Let's take the priorities and call them goals.
Well, let's just take them, take them right off.
That's exactly what I'm saying, Steve.
They're right here.
It's just semantics.
They're right here.
Those are not-
It says long-term goals that should support our strategic vision.
That's just a bunch of foo-foo stuff.
That's part of the strategic visioning initiative, there are 12-
Yeah, I know the ones at our goal-setting session.
And, I mean, one thing that we might do and you might find a value is to bring back those 12 goals. Just because they weren't officially adopted doesn't mean that they haven't had work done on them. Uh, for example, you talked about, uh, finding the role of the community center, that's being looked at right now by the Parker Rec Advisory Board. You talked about, you know, working to improve tribal relations. I think we've had, you know, wonderful strides over the past year with the Intergovernmental Working Group, rental housing. I know the police chief is looking at some of the things and that, so there has action that's been taken. It might be of some benefit for you to take a look at those. We had some ideas as far as some tasks and you can tell us whether you still agree with those or whether you think that we should substitute something else because that's been accomplished or really look at whether that's something that you want to do and/or invest resources in, because in some cases, it may take, uh, some, uh, some cost of, of, of money.
And just to be clear, the priorities were adopted by this body?
Not sure that they were.
They were. The, the follow-up goals were not.
Okay.
The, 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 the work that we did from the, uh-
They were adopted at, at the goal-setting sessions. That's correct. You're correct.
Okay. So, Council Whiting?
Uh, maybe, you know, Mr. McNeil brings up a good point, maybe it's time to take a look at those, revisit, uh, our progress on those goals, refocus, um, and, and see, you know, at like Councilman Lay, Clay says that we've, uh, we've made some moves tonight that have forwarded those, so let's take, let's take a look at them, you know, the next few meetings here when we can get them in there and, uh, see where we've gone, gone and, and see where we can go.
All right, Council Sherman, what do you?
I was just going to say that to Council Clay's point, we now have a budget, so that directionally does help.
Mm-hmm.
And revisiting those 12 with that budget in hand would be good timing.
Perfect.
And we also prioritize them at that workshop, so we'd have to pick up-
Four highest, four medium, and four lowest, yes.
And some of those will fluctuate, I think, too, depending on what hits, but-
Right. And the other part of wanting to get something like this moving forward is for our 2014 budget. Like, I, I kind of felt like we were coming into this budget cycle as council with the priorities, we knew what we wanted to do, but we didn't, we weren't working toward, it all just kind of happened during the budget cycle and I would-
But that's because we have new people who needed to just get through a basic budget cycle before making it any more difficult than it already needed to be.
In a year that a lot of outside forces made it much more difficult than it really ever had to be.
Does that mean?
That means that the market value homestead credit change-
Ah, all right.
Change and the federal government's games that they're playing and the state issues that they're playing all happened to land right on a time when we had new members that maybe took, needed a little time to brush up on government budgeting compared to private sector business budgeting. Two different animals.
Got it. All right, so if we, um, either the first or second meeting in January, want to bring back the priorities and we'll talk about those and as to where we're going with everything? Does that work for folks?
Or February, maybe even March.
Or April.
Wow.
You want a motion?
Um, sure.
Uh, I'll, I'll move to direct staff to, uh, bring back the goals and priorities that we set at our, uh, goal session and to revisit that in the next, uh, um, you want a date on that or?
Uh, if you could give us, uh, until the 8th or the 22nd of January?
Okay, with the, by-
Or July?
By January.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Second, Council Sherman, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, item number 11, council member reports, we'll start with Council Whiting.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I attended the school board meeting. I had some things prepared, but I didn't bring them with, but, uh, they're, uh, moving forward with, uh, there's some naming of the, uh, ALC, uh, Learning Center and have some ideas on that and they're, uh, progressing on that. I also attended the chamber board meeting where they are working on their budget and getting that approved for the chamber and the, uh, visitors bureau, um, making progress on that. And that's, that's about it.
Thank you, sir. Council Clay?
Uh, as I mentioned the last time, the update for the Utilities Commission, um, there's not going to be any significant rate increases in electricity or water this year. Um, at the last meeting, they did pass the resolution, uh, setting the trunk water charge for, um, all Saints senior living, so that's moving along smoothly. Um, they did pass a number of resolutions slightly tweaking some of the different, um, minor little fees for, to keep their fund reserves up for different, various different, uh, things, but other than that, uh, things are running smoothly at Spuck.
Beautiful. Council Layman?
30 days was pro, post-polling. Apparently, uh, members couldn't make it or something, I'm not sure. I haven't heard when the follow-up date is going to be for that, but that's the end-of-the-year budget one and I kind of, and I'm interested in that. What's that?
I think it's, uh, fourth week in January, first Thursday, I believe, in January.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't heard, so, but when I get that, I'll go to that one. Um, the 18th of December, I think, is the, uh, 169 Quarter Coalition Legislative Advocacy meeting. Plan on going to that one. Or is it a TILA conference? I can't remember. But anyway, I'm going to do one or the other.
All right. Council Sherman?
I don't have an update, thank you.
All right, and neither do I. Um, any other business? Council Layman?
Motion to adjourn to Tuesday, December 18th, 7:00 PM.
Are you, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Council Sherman, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned at, uh, 9:44.